Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Ken Smith. I'm the mayor of the city of Vader. It's my privilege and honor to officially call this regularly scheduled city council meeting to order at 6:00 PM. We extend a cordial welcome to all of you, within and without our community, who felt prompted and inspired to be here. This should be an historic event in which we're going to fill a vacancy recently created at the resignation of Mark Penison. So, I express appreciation to all of you for being here, and particularly for our elected officials. We're thankful to you for your presence as well. We'll officially begin with roll call. Invite our city clerk to carry that out for us.
Andy Wilson.
Present.
Joe Scheid.
Present.
Ruth Creer.
Present.
Judy Costello.
Present.
And Ken Smith.
Also present. With that, we do have a quorum, so we'll proceed with our pledge of allegiance, and would invite all to please rise. And Mrs. Creer, would you make this?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unregard, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll proceed with the mayor's report, and I want to startle most everybody present here to when I indicate that I don't have anything that inspired me enough to report on in our city council meeting. So, hold on to your chairs and your hats. Let's proceed with our agenda. And so, I would invite council action to approve our city council agenda for tonight's meeting on February 25th. I should quickly add that we were approached earlier by Deputy Engelbrechtson, who asked to provide a report from the sheriff's department, and I would like to insert that right after public comment. So, that's the only adjustment I would make. Now, I think Councilwoman Costello would like to add something relating to the street.
Yes, could we add something relating to my flashing light behind me here?
Yes.
We can do that at four.
Item number four.
And also, we tabled conversation of the wastewater treatment plant.
Yes.
And is that something that we could discuss tonight, or what's your?
If the council would exercise patience, we do have Representative of the Department of Commerce Kathy Reed, who's going to be making a presentation, and I would once again defer until our next council meeting, if you wouldn't mind.
Okay.
There's a reason for that. Okay, so, two adjustments. Sheriff's report and the street improvement report.
Costello.
Now, council action. Did you want to submit a motion?
I was going to make a motion that we approved the Thursday, February 20th.
Twenty-fifth.
Twenty-fifth agenda, city council meeting agenda for the 25th of February 2016.
With the amendments as noted, right? With the amendments as noted?
Yes, with the amendments.
Okay. Do we have a second for that motion?
A second.
Executed by Mrs. Costello. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? That motion is carried. Now, we'll proceed with the approval of the minutes from our previous city council meeting on February 11.
I make a motion to approve the minutes of city council meeting 2/11/2016 as written.
Okay. Mrs. Costello submitted a motion to approve those minutes as written. Do we have a second?
I have a second.
Executed by Mr. Wilson. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Now, voucher approval.
I make a motion we approve the vouchers in February 2016 for the amount of $11,197.11, and for the total February 2016, $67,591.15.
Okay. Mr. Wilson has submitted a motion to approve those voucher expenditures and totals noted. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Executed by Mrs. Creer. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? That motion is carried. Public comment.
Jill, I'm going to pass my new motion. Okay, you are.
I will. Then, we just have one. May Heiner.
Okay. Very good. Then, May, come on up and then state your name, and we'll find you've got three minutes.
Hi, I'm May Heiner, and I'm here representing the Country Cruisers Car Club. We had submitted an application to use McMurphy Park on June 4th, and I would like to know the conclusion of the...
Been approved.
No, a while. I mean, there's no reason why it can't be, but it hasn't gone through the process yet.
What process does it need to go through? We took it to the park board, and the park board gave it to the city hall.
Right.
And is it on the agenda today?
It doesn't usually go to the agenda.
What does it need to do?
Usually approved in the administrative.
It's approved through the administrative?
Right. The mayor approves it.
Oh, just the mayor has to approve it?
Yeah. It's pretty straightforward. It's an annual event, unless there's something I'm not aware of, so...
You just have to...I just haven't had a chance to work on it. We've been doing Congress for the last three days, so...
And in Jill's defense, she was out all week last week, quite ill, as a matter of fact, so...but I'm not aware of anything that would preclude the Country Cruisers from using it, so feel free.
Yeah, we just have to get started. I mean, it's a long process of what we have to do, so we need to know that.
Be the same event you've had in the previous years, right? Okay? Go forward.
Okay, so everything is the same?
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you.
That was easy. Here again, obviously, there's continuing confusion on the part of our residents. If you have such questions, it's...if you know the phone number to City Hall, it's a simple matter to call and to come and make it a matter of public comment is awkward, but...
Well, I wasn't sure of the process that I had to go through. I know you have a parks department, so I thought that the parks department would recommend whether they approved it or not to the city council. That's how it used to work. I didn't know that just the mayor had to approve it.
No, that's been more standard operating procedure than going through the park board, but in any event, a phone call to the city hall would clear up those questions quite easily, but regardless, if a public comment is a forum that you were comfortable with, more positive?
Sure, I don't mind.
Excellent. Very good. Well, let's proceed with our...are there any others?
No.
Okay. Let's proceed with our sheriff's report.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of council. I was asked by our administration to come down and give a brief report as to what we've been doing in the city of Vader. So, I pulled some stats from all of last year and then for the first...through the first week of February, so I only have January in one week and the February. So, for 2015, the sheriff's office contacted 4,055 citizens. We call...we deem those citizen contacts which are, you know, going down to a business, contacting the store owner, talking to them about, you know, whatever may be a problem or how things are going in the community. We handled 346 calls for service in the city of Vader. We had 366 traffic stops, 21 misdemeanor arrests, seven felony arrests, and we wrote 37 infractions, which you may think 37 infractions is kind of low for stopping 366 cars, but that's actually on par with a county average, usually about 8% to 10% for every car you stop, you're going to actually write a citation. So, that's right in the ballpark of where it should be. For this year, we've had 476 citizen contacts, we've handled 20 calls for service, we've made 45 traffic stops, two misdemeanor arrests, and one felony arrest so far for January and the one week into February. We have assisted the FBI with a service of a search warrant in the last several weeks involving some computer crimes. I won't get into too much detail about that because I'm not so sure that they have actually closed their case on that, but we are working with the FBI on that. And the sheriff and his administration has made it very clear that, you know, we have requirements working in the city of Vader. We're going to do so many citizen contacts, we're going to work so many patrol hours, you know, we're not going to come down here and drive around and try to sit. We're going to try to be active and contact people to see what the problems are, if they're having any problems. So, you know, although we may not be able to make your neighbor down the road paint his house or mow his lawn, if your neighbor that's not mowing his lawn or not painting his house has a warrant for his arrest, we will go and take care of it. So, just remember, we're up in 24 hours a day. We have deputies on, and we will respond to whatever you need, so we're here for whatever.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions from the council? All righty. Well, thank you for that report.
How often do we get reports?
It depends on...
I've never given one. I was asked to come down here, and I think we're going to start giving them probably a little more regularly, maybe once a month.
The contract does specify that there will be regular reports, and if the council is okay with one per month, we could do that.
I think so.
Okay?
Yes.
Very good, then. Thank you. And with that, then, let's proceed with our city business. Item number one, council will consider the vacancy for position...council position number two. And just to remind the council, the process involved in the city of Vader is a very straightforward process that involves nominations from the remaining seated elected council representatives. And so, I turn the time over to the council for their voting action.
I've read the three applications that were given to me today, and I'm going to make a motion that I would like to nominate Jason Daley, position number two, as a city councilman for the city of Vader. He's lived here a long time, I told him since he was a very, very young kid, including one time he ran into the ditch. But anyway, I know an awful lot about him, and I think he'd be a very good councilman. He's young, and he's worked for the city, has always been involved with the city, and so...and my motion is for Jason Daley to take position number two.
Okay. But we're in the process of taking nominations, so you have officially nominated Jason Daley, candidate for that position, okay? Are there any other nominations that the council members?
I have a nomination.
Okay.
I'd like to nominate Kevin Flynn. Kevin has a longstanding relationship with the council, lots of community service within the community. He also was the first runner-up of all the candidates in this past election with 49% of the citizens' vote. That's quite the achievement, even though he didn't quite make the cut. That's a lot of folks that think Kevin would be a great council member, and I'd like to give those folks a voice.
Okay. We have two nominations then, so far. Jason Daley, from Mr. Wilson, Joe Scheid nominates Kevin Flynn. Any other nominations? Going once? Going twice? Okay. Then, by hearing that there are no other nominations, we can proceed to process those Let's engage in a simple vote. Those of you seated on the council who would vote for Jason Daley, let's indicate by the uplifted hand if you would vote for Jason Daley to occupy position number two. We see three votes. How many of you would vote for Kevin Flynn by the raised hand? Okay? I see a three to one vote. That was straightforward. So, Jason Daley, if you please rise, and then we will...do we have an oath of office for Mr. Daley at this moment in time?
He has a blank look on his face.
No.
That's okay.
I can get one.
Well, let's get one. Okay? Stay put. It's the mayor's privilege to swear in that he is a newly-elected council representative, and so, I think that we were a little startled that it happened so quickly and that we didn't think about such things.
You'd think you'd have it memorized by the number of folks coming and going.
Well, I...
Yeah.
Just make it official here.
Congratulations, Jason.
Yes.
No running in the ditch anymore.
If I raise your right hand and over repeat afternoon, I state your name.
I, Jason Daley.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
And the laws of the state of Washington.
And the laws of the state of Washington.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
And the laws of the United States of America.
And the laws of the United States of America.
And that I will faithfully.
And I will faithfully.
And impartially perform.
And impartially perform.
And discharge the duties.
And discharge the duties.
Of the city council of the city of Vader, Washington.
Of the city council of the city of Vader, Washington.
According to law.
According to law.
And the best of my ability.
And the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. All righty. Well, you may occupy the seat there.
They always do it right here, and they move over there.
And Jason, make sure you sign the oath before you leave. And as a matter of public record, the position will remain filled until November 17th, 2000...wait, November 2017 is when the position becomes vacant and will be required to be part of the special election that will take place then. So, with that...that was...so, with that, let's proceed with our agenda. Council will be pleased to hear a presentation by Kathy Reed, Washington State Department of Commerce, and Scott Pollak to explain what steps the city will need to do to...
They don't know the results yet, so they'll be giving the results.
Gotcha. Okay.
Thank you. Again, my name's Kathy Reed. I work for the State Department of Commerce. I recognize a lot of you. Good to see you. I've been working with the city for many years as the city has worked to upgrade its wastewater collection system and for the planning for wastewater treatment plant upgrades. And as you can imagine, it's very helpful to have grant and low-interest loan funding for those types of projects. And for as long as I've been down here, the city has been eligible for a particular grant program called the Community Development Block Grant Program, which, for reasons I'm about to explain, you are not currently eligible, but there is a pathway to eligibility. So, I wanted to give you just a little background about what that all means. So, up until the year 2000, household income data was collected during the census, but starting in 2010, the census no longer collected that data, and it started happening by a group under the Census Bureau called the American Community Survey. And they collected household data, I think, I believe, through phone calls, and they keep a five-year running average in order to assign a number to a median household income of a community. So, if a community does not agree with those numbers that are collected, they can do something called an income survey, where you...well, I'll talk more about that. Household income data is important, especially when you're wanting to upgrade your infrastructure, such as your wastewater system. The Community Development Block Grant Program uses that data to determine whether you're even eligible to apply for their money. And then, other programs, such as Department of Ecology, use that data to determine if they're going to...you're always eligible to apply, but they use that data to determine whether or not they may want to grant for lower interest loan or maybe better terms on the loan. So, it's important to make sure that your household income data that the agencies are looking at is actually reflective of the community. So, I won't go through the definitions of all this, but on your handout, it talks about low and moderate income households, median household income. Those are two measures of household income that the programs are concerned about. And then, there's also called, when you're talking about income surveys, there's the area or the universe in which you are talking about. So, for example, right now, Lewis County owns your water system. The water system sewer...the water system service area includes both the city limits and Enchanted Valley. That's the service area for the water system. The city owns the wastewater system, and the service area for the wastewater system is just the city limits. So, there's an important distinguishment there if you are applying for funding for the water system versus the wastewater system. So, the U.S. Housing...Department of Housing and Urban Development, or HUD, you may have heard of, they're kind of the parent agency for the Community Development Block Grant Program in Washington State. And they...HUD tells the CDBG program in Washington which communities are eligible for the funding. They...HUD uses this American Community Survey data, and they publish a list of who is eligible. You guys might remember, about a year ago, there was an article in the paper stating that several cities in Lewis County, which have previously been eligible for this grant funding, no longer are. So, it was Vader and Morton, Winlock still is eligible, and I believe Mossy Rock is still eligible. But several of the cities that have traditionally relied on those sources of fund became no longer eligible. Some of them are now starting to challenge that data through an income survey. In fact, Morton is just...I think the income surveys went out to the households this week, so there's a kind of big uproar in a lot of the little towns around the state about this data, because a lot of people don't think it's correct. So, to qualify for the CDBG program, the Community Development Block Grant Program, at least 51% of the households have to be considered low to moderate income, and what that means is below 80% of the county's median household income. So, it gets real complicated, but you might want to know that. The data that HUD gave the state CDBG program said that only 34% of the city's households met that criteria. So, it's not a fun thing to conduct an income survey. You have to, you know, you sent...you guys had one conducted by Lewis County, so everybody probably received a questionnaire in the mail, I think, last year, 18 months ago, maybe? Something like that, right? And I'll be deferring to Scott Pollak from Arrowhead Engineering here. He's one who conducted the income survey for the county. So, rather than do that again, go through that process, we were hoping that we would be able to carve out just the city limit information to see if the city would qualify on its own. So, just to remind you, the county had surveyed this much bigger area. We wanted to look at the data from the smaller area. So, Scott, as I mentioned, conducted the income survey, and actually, for that whole area, including Enchanted Valley for the water system, they received both enough surveys to make it a valid survey, and found that they were eligible for the Community Development Block Grant Program. So, we were hoping that for the city only, we'd find the same thing. There are 216 households in the city limits, or in the sewer service area, and for that size of a population, you need to get a 78% return rate of the surveys to make sure it's statistically significant or valid. Unfortunately, from within the city limits, when Scott went and looked at this for the city more recently, only about 50% of those households in the city limits returned their surveys. So, it's not considered a valid survey for the city limits only. So, that...you haven't proven to CDBG yet that the city only is eligible for those funds. And I'm going to tell you a couple more things, and then I'll open it up, so in case you have questions for Scott. But, so, the way to prove what you...prove what your actual incomes are would be to conduct another income survey. So, I've been talking a lot about CDBG, the grant program, but it's also important for Department of Ecology. Department of Ecology is a very likely source of funds for future wastewater system upgrade projects, and instead of it being a threshold issue for them, they look at what your median...what the median household income of the city is. So, you get, what did I say? 216 households, you line them all up in order, whatever the one in the middle is, you know, just as many above as below, that's the median household income of the city. Now, why is that important? They only have limited grant funds, and so, in order to fairly distribute those across the state, they do something called a hardship analysis. In the hardship analysis, they compare your...what your wastewater rates would be if you took just a loan for your project, compared to your median household income. If it's over 2%, then they might offer you a low-interest loan or grant money. So, it is...it's also very important to know how a correct median household income, that's the denominator in that equation. And so, right now, the data that Ecology is using says that the median household income for the city is $39,712. That will...the data they use will change every year. Remember, I told you they use a five-year average? So, each year, they knock off the first five and add a fifth year. So, what that means for Ecology is that even...you're still able to apply...well, I'm not going to...I'm not even going to give you what you'd have to...what your rates would have to be in order to access their grant funds, because it's going to change by the time you... in order to access their grant funds, because it's going to change by the time you apply for their funding. But suffice it to say, it's important to know what the true number is, the median household income. So before we go on about what next steps might be, I wanted Scott to have an opportunity to talk about how you analyzed the results of the previous survey. Came up with the data that you did?
Yes, this is John.
Is that okay? Or does anybody have any questions about how he did that?
I have a question. When you get these telephone calls and they're doing the survey, and you don't want to give your income, how do they tell what income, I mean, just by what they, may they ask, what kind of house should have, how big is it?
Was it somebody saying they were from the census?
Yes.
Okay. So you were one of the few that actually got called?
Yes.
See, I think part of the problem with their data, there's a high margin of error. Some think they call that many households. So if you don't tell them, then they don't, you know, they can't use your data.
I, okay.
They won't make something up.
Okay. I didn't know if they looked at everything else that they gave them and said, well, it's a new house. It's this, they must be...
No, they, no, no. I'm pretty sure they don't do that. Yeah.
And how do we get kicked out of the eligibility, right?
It's because they're collecting the data in this new way. Well, I believe it's because they're collecting the data in the new way, not asking everybody and using that data. They're asking a small percentage of the city. And so like I said, there's, I think there's a high margin of error. And I don't know if it's just chance, the people they call happen to be higher income, or if only the people that were higher income bothered to answer the question or wanted to answer the question. I, who knows why?
But how'd they get us at $39,000? Aren't you saying that...
That American, that American Community Survey each year samples a segment of the population. And based on the small, or I can't say small, I don't know what their sampling size is, based on who they talked to, they lined up all the, like I said, they lined up them in order, and the middle one was 39,712. That's, and that, that again was American Community Survey data. It's a little bit, even though it's collected by the same organization, CDBG and Ecology use the data a little bit differently. CDBG looks at household size and compares the household size. For the Ecology one, it doesn't, household size doesn't matter. So Scott, when you looked at this data for the city only, did I portray that all correctly, that there, that it boils down to you didn't have enough survey responses from within the city limits?
Yeah. The smaller the population, the higher the bar is. And for the city limit-sized population, they require 78 percent. That's pretty difficult. I mean, you have to have 78 percent of everybody has to have given a usable answer. That's kind of tough. And there was only about half of the population did that, so it wouldn't qualify.
I know a lot of people, it just don't want to give the...
Scott, how is it that it takes 78 percent to get back on the, the under wage level? But it takes more, less than that to get off? How does that work?
Yeah, that's interesting.
You mean about how do you make it to that 78 percent limit?
Yeah, I mean, it didn't take 78 percent to get us off.
I think he's saying that probably American Community Survey organizations did not survey 80 percent of the community.
Yeah, and their whole thing is, they just went to a pretty coarse method. So that's kind of their best guess to median household income here is close to $40,000, but it's a coarse method.
But 80 percent of 216, that's, that's a tremendous amount of people that have this.
Right. Their best guess for your median household income is close to $40,000. You're probably more like 28 or something like that. But that, that is a difficult number to come to, because the standard is very high for getting that, that number reliably to the extent that they want it. If you should choose to pursue that with another income survey, there are some, I don't want to say tricks, but there are some things that you would want to do. You'd want to have a lot of preparation with getting the number of people who need to respond on board and willing to respond. So that's going to take some, that would take some effort if you should, if you should choose to undertake that.
A lot of advertisement to the community that, hey, this is coming. They are confidential surveys. Nobody in the city is going to be able to associate your income with your address or anything like that.
Yeah, in fact, for the last one, I'm the only human being on the planet who can link anybody's name, and I would have to look it up. You know, so, yeah, it's absolutely private.
But this CDBG grant money is supposedly like the most important thing. We could go as, after as a little city then.
Well, it's all grant, so that's nice. The city has traditionally used quite a bit of CDBG grant money in the past for wastewater system upgrades. So the most you can apply for from that program is $750,000. So it wouldn't pay for 100 percent of what you will need eventually, but it sure would help. Yeah. So just wanted to say that, yes, you can hire, you can hire somebody to do another income survey for you. And again, if you want to do that, I recommend, I can work with Jill to help do some outreach to the community beforehand. But there's another option that wasn't really available to the county, the county, how are you? The Department of Ecology has a contract with a small nonprofit corporation called Rural Community Assistance Corporation, and they actually helped the city with a rate spending last year for free. RCAC can also do an income survey for cities for free. I put Vader back on the list to be considered by Ecology for this, to have Ecology pay RCAC to do the income survey. So I assumed you would want to be at least on the list. I don't know how long it might be before they work their way down. They are doing income surveys for several other places around the state, including Morton. And so I'm being your advocate, I guess, with Ecology to keep you moved up on the list for that one. One other thing to think about is the income surveys are good for three years. And so we want to make sure we don't do it more than three years before you think you might be applying for construction money for your project. Right? That's enough, that one.
Right.
Unless there's any other questions.
Any questions from the council members? Well then, thank you. We will set in motion the steps necessary to resolve this problem.
Okay. Great.
And we will keep the council apprised.
I'm in touch with Jill's result.
Yes.
Thank you.
And perhaps that could be part of our next council meeting's report regarding the waste treatments. Alrighty.
That was the part where we rolled the dice?
Pardon?
Joe, was that the part where we rolled the dice and whatever happened?
Something about better odds than the power.
Okay, yes, the power. Okay, I was just checking with you.
Let's proceed with item number three, Councils to Consider. And here are the second reading of ordinance 2016-01. This is a franchise agreement with a cell cellular. We went through this in our last council meeting, and so it's a rather perfunctory process. Would invite the council to engage in a similar reading of it. We do have a representative of the company, Stell, would that be you? Would you like to address the council for a minute?
Yeah, if anybody has any questions, I can try to answer them.
Okay. Why don't you give your name for the public record?
Pete Anderson, and I work with this town broadband. I actually grew up in Winlock. I live in Applevine, so I have close community ties. And we are a company that is building in Oregon, California, and Washington currently. And this particular project, we need to pass through Vader to reach a cell tower that's west of town, which will increase communication networks' abilities and speed and reliability. And so we have to go through multiple entities throughout the state to reach our targets. And at some point, it'll help increase cell service to residents and local area peoples.
Any questions? I know in our last council meeting, we had you on the phone, I think.
It wasn't me, but I'm a local person, so I volunteered to come to the meeting, so.
Any questions from the council or Mr. Anderson?
There was a question at the last council meeting that I got an answer to, and I believe it was in your notes as well, but I'll just reiterate. One thing that we asked about, that council was asking about, is franchise fee. And what we found out is that with this type of utility, the telecommunications, that you're not allowed to have a franchise fee. So that's why we didn't see it in the contract. There are other types of franchise fee, or franchise agreements, that you can have a franchise fee, but with this type, it's state-regulated that there is no franchise fee. So the only income that would come from this agreement eventually would be the 6 percent utility tax that's on all of the utilities that are not owned by the city government.
Is that based on a customer? There are certain customers in favor of that one?
It'll be serving the cell tower closer to Ridgeway. But basically, anybody on that tower would, at some point, see better service because of our fiber optic communication or connection to that tower.
I know there was one question, I think, Judy, you had it.
Did we confirm, are we going up or down, or both?
I'm sorry.
Are we going on the lines or underground or?
At this point, it looks like we're, be 100 percent aerial through town. Unless there comes back with an issue on a pole or two, I can't speak to that just yet, because I don't have the permits in my hand. If there, if the case arises where we do need to go underground, we will submit for a permit application with the city. And, you know, I'm sure that you guys have a permit process, and we'll be following that process.
I think that was the answer last time, too, was permits hadn't been completed yet to know.
It's too early to tell just yet, you know, dealing with the PUD and things like that. It takes time to go through the whole process.
And that was also a holdup on your tentative date to start?
Well, there's several permits that we need. The railroad permit, the county permits, probably a DOT permit as well. There's multiple permits, and so everything has to come together before we can make it happen.
Okay.
Alrighty, we have a question from the audience with the council. Care to go forward?
Here's the one wire, the ten wire?
It'll be a cable with a high count, high strand count fiber within that sheath.
So what, one inch diameter?
No, it'll be half inch, three-quarters of an inch bulk diameter. And within that, there'll be anywhere from 144 to 288 strands of fiber.
Very good. Well, thank you.
You're welcome.
Appreciate your presence here and answering the questions. So I believe that we need to read the...
I would make a motion that we approve the order to the 2016-01 grant, a non-exclusive franchise to the Stell Broadband LLC for telecommunication purposes. This date of February 2016.
Okay, first, a motion submitted by Mr. Wilson to approve the motion as read. We have a second.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Mr. Shai. Any other commentary from the council members at this moment in time? During none, let's put it to a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Motion's carried. All right, our last item, this was in addition to the agenda relating to a conversation that took place in our council meeting two weeks ago that has to do with efforts to improve the safety of our crosswalks at 506. And I know that, Mr. Shai, you mentioned that you were going to do some research on that.
I'm glad you put on the agenda, because if you didn't, I would have.
Oh, good.
It's perfect. So I've turned the time over to both of you.
My homework was to contact the Castle Rock School District to see what they could do for us. Took a field trip down there, and they normally only put up a bus stop sign, a bus crossing ahead, if there's 500 feet of visibility, a lack of 500 feet of visibility. And so down there, it would be probably pretty close to 500 feet coming up over that rise from the road tracks. But once again, all they would do is add a sign that said, "Bus, bus drop off," or some, some type of verbiage like that. That's what they'll do for us.
So that's all Castle Rock had to offer?
That's it.
Okay. Did you receive any phone calls from your other friends at Department of?
No.
No?
Well, so...
This is, this would sit on top of, and this is just representative of the pole, but this would go on top of our current signage we had in the shop, which was pedestrian. And there would be two of these. This lasts up to six-plus months, going 24/7. It's not very bright, as you can see, so it's not, it's not annoying, I don't think, to residents. I mean, I'm the only resident close to A Street.
It's your house.
And it's my house, okay? And it didn't annoy me. It's been the best, my car and in my building all day today, so it's not annoying. I don't know. I just kind of think it's the beginning of something. I think it's a step in the right direction. We already have the signs. And these were how much, Steve? We need to buy them in quantity, guys.
They're $18 apiece, and shipping plus shipping.
So we need three more.
Would we want to have, would we want to have on each side or just have?
On each side, I believe.
On one crossing, just on one of the signs? Will they need to be on both sides? Do we need them on both sides?
I don't know.
What would it take? Four for each?
No, two for each crossing.
So four in total?
Four total. But the question is, is do we want them on both sides?
I would say the sides.
Two sides.
So both sides? We have a comment from a member of the public, and the council want to hear it.
Yes.
Go forward.
Okay, I don't, excuse me. I did start this, and I would say all sides of the streets, because they come in both ways.
What's the second crosswalk?
D Street. That's right near us.
At the school.
We have like 12 children at post office for that school bus stop.
It's a likewise number of the D Street.
And then the D Street stop also, and then all of the crossing right there to the post office at A Street, and then going down to the store and et cetera. So this is a huge magnet under here, compliments of Steve. And so this has to really be pried up. The wind won't take it. Yes, it's huge magnet. So that was the gizmo for keeping it on there.
Is there any of those that are maybe like solar powered? That would last longer, you wouldn't have to replace it?
Well, I can check it. They do have them in here, but at the time, I didn't check in the price of those.
The complete setup that I saw, that was the post, the sign, some flinky LED lights, and a, and a button to press when you wanted to activate it, and a solar panel on top. It was $1,500 a sign for the whole, the whole unit.
$1,500 sounds pretty good.
Yeah.
All right, and so if we do that and then paint, put fresh fluorescent white paint across the 506. It's a start.
And I spoke to John yesterday, and he said that he thinks he probably could communicate with the hardware store in Winlock possibly, and see what type of paint.
Oh, true.
If they have any in stock over there for doing that.
Perfect. Well, then, if the council, I see that nods of approval for this concept. If you authorize the mayor and administrative staff to implement it, we can set that in motion, if you'd like.
Yes.
I don't think we need a motion.
We don't need, we don't need a motion to approve seventy-two dollars in lights?
No.
You got it?
I could approve that.
You got that signing, you got that signing authority?
Yes, I do. All righty. Well, then the two comments.
I can take a look at the price on the solar power lights too. And I'll give back the price there tomorrow for something.
All right. Well, if it's in the ballpark, we'll.
Yeah.
If it needs council action, we'll bring it up at the next meeting. But if not, we'll proceed.
Is that light, uh, light battery? Okay.
We're going to go solar if we can.
Yeah, but we'd need four, yeah, four of them, so that would be quite a bit for us.
Well, we, I don't know the price of the solar.
We don't know yet.
That was for a whole setup.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, then with that, thank you for your research and your action. It was impressive. Any other comments from the council members?
About anything or?
No, just this topic.
Just this topic.
We have to stay focused.
Under this topic, this catalog here has got the paint stuff for the roads too.
Who does it?
So we can look into that. I didn't look into it, but they have it, I didn't even book it.
My personal feeling is that if we can keep it local, I mean, shop in Winlock, I, I prefer that myself.
Yeah.
So, all righty, then with that, any other comments? Hearing none, then we've completed council action for tonight, and I would, or this meeting adjourned at six fifty-two p.m.